Today is Wednesday, June 22, 2022. Time is 6:30 PM and I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. We will now say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Mr. Cardamom will be performing the clerk duties. Mr. Cardamom, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Cusmano.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Treasurer Gillette.
Here.
Bert Posey is not present and Supervisor Viviano.
Here. Moving on to approval of the agenda, Mr. Cardamom, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
There are. There are two add-on items under Engineering, number 10, request to pour and saw cut concrete outside of noise ordinance hours at the 24 and Hayes Meyer site. Under Human Resources, authorization to hire accounting clerk. There is one proposed removal of the Fire Department item, number 14, request to purchase two custom pumpers. And number 21 under Supervisor's Office has been amended to include adoption of the resolution. So the words "adopt resolution" were added to that agenda item and the action item.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, move that we adopt the agenda with the additions, deletions, and adjustments as described by the deputy clerk.
Support.
Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the agenda as corrected. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills, is there a motion? Chair, move to approve?
Support.
Any discussion on the bill run? Hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the list of bills. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Approval of the previous meeting's minutes from June 8, 2022, is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion on last meeting's minutes? Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the previous meeting's minutes from June 8, 2022. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public comment, this is for agenda items only. Anyone who wishes to make public comment, please approach the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. Anyone participating remotely can digitally raise their hand. Roger, do you see anybody?
No, sir.
Okay, having nobody wishes to participate in public comment, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda in its entirety.
Trustee Cusmano supports.
Any discussion on any of the consent items? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Cusmano, to approve the consent agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to number item, item number nine, request to execute a cost sharing agreement for the construction costs with Macomb County Department of Roads for the Garfield Road extension from 24 Mile Road to 25 Mile Roads.
Motion to approve. Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Back in 2020, the Township Board entered into a cost sharing agreement for the segment of Garfield between 22 and 23 Mile Road. We've had a bit of hiccup happen with one of the deeds that we cannot get recorded. It's outside of our control. So in order to keep the project moving, the Department of Roads and the Township would like to move to another segment where we do have all the right-of-way that we need to complete. So what's before you tonight is a cost sharing agreement for the segment between 24 and 25 Mile. It actually starts about a quarter mile south of 24 Mile. The idea would be that they would perform all the work at the intersection in the segment south of 24 this year and probably complete the balance of the 24 to 25 Mile segment next year. So the cost sharing agreement is before you would transfer the money that we had deposited previously from 22 to 23 to the segment, which is 1.4, a little over 1.4 million dollars. There would be another 1.4 million dollars that would be due. This is obviously a longer segment. Plus, obviously, prices have gone up in the two years since the original cost share agreement has been put in place. So I should mention that there is an additional agreement that will be coming to the board probably at the next meeting with regard to the design work for all three miles. We're not done reviewing that, but this one was ready to go, so we wanted to get this in place so the Department of Roads can move forward with the construction and bidding of this segment. So we've reviewed the document and are recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to execute the cost sharing agreement for the construction costs with the Macomb County Department of Roads for the Garfield Road extension from 24 to 25 Mile Road. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 10, this is the first add-on, is the request to pour and saw cut concrete outside of the noise ordinance hours at the Meyer site at 24 and Hayes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members. The Meyer site at 24 and Hayes Road has gotten to a point where they need to pour the concrete floor for the building itself. The walls are, for the most part, up. The only things that, the only openings in the building are where the windows would be and doors and whatnot. This is a fairly large pour, obviously, it's a big building. They're proposing to do it in two pours. The way concrete works when you saw the saw joints into the pavement to keep the concrete from cracking is that the concrete has to be poured, has to sit for quite a bit of time, probably in the neighborhood of four to eight hours, depending on the weather and humidity and whatnot, before they can actually saw the pavement. So what they're proposing to do is start at 6 o'clock in the morning versus the 7:30 that the ordinance would allow and then go past the 6 o'clock to the ordinance deadline at 6:00 PM in the evening in order to complete the sawing. Obviously, they would start the sawing as soon as they can, but we won't know what time they'll be able to start the sawing until they're actually out there doing the work and they're testing the concrete. So they are proposing to take some measures to keep the noise inside the building with some soundproofing and whatnot. They have had a recent experience with their store in Orient Township. It sounds like it was successful and you couldn't hear much outside the walls of the building. So we've reviewed their request and we are recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any questions?
I just got one. When was their finish time roughly that the next time you'd allow them to finish?
Yeah, in their request, they're requesting 10:00 PM. There is a real good possibility that they're done long before then, but they're requesting 6:00 AM so that they can start early so that they're not going, you know, 11 and later. We have had experiences where they, you know, the contractor doesn't ask permission and they're out there, you know, at 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning and they're saw cutting and the Sheriff's Department is being called. So Meyer is actually coming forward in asking for permission versus asking for forgiveness later.
So 10:00 PM would be the worst case then?
Yes, that's what we believe.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, this is for a one-day event, is that correct?
Two days, I'm sorry.
A day event?
Yeah, the slab for the floor will be poured in two days. I think it's the 28th and the 30th. So next Tuesday.
Weather dependent, there's no roof, there's no roof in the building, right?
No, I believe there's a roof in the building.
Oh, there is a roof in the building, so they can pour and what?
Yeah, so they would pour half of it on Tuesday and the other half on Thursday. Same process, same start time, same finish. Might change depending on, you know, what the temperature and humidity is on, you know, Thursday versus Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to allow pouring and saw cutting outside of the noise ordinance hours at the Meyer site. Members, please vote. Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to item 11, which is an authorization to hire a utility worker. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Support.
Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. The Macomb Township Board of Trustees authorized HR to initiate the recruitment process for the position of utility worker. The position was posted in compliance with the MAPCBA. The HR department received 21 applications. Six were invited to interview with the selection committee. The selection committee consisted of Kevin Johnson, Ed Koenig, Kevin Mish, and myself, and we are recommending Ted Morenci and Brandon Logan for the position. If approved, it contingent upon completion of all post offer requirements and the effective date we're shooting for is July 11, 2022. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion, questions?
I just got one. When would their start date be?
July 11, that's what we're shooting for, yeah.
And they're ready to go?
They'll be ready to go, yeah, yep.
Thank you.
How many applicants did we get?
We have 20, or had 20, over 20.
Pretty good turnout. Somebody wants to work these days.
So that department will be full after this, after these two hires if you approve it?
Good.
Any more discussion or questions? Okay, a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to authorize the hiring of two utility workers. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. This is, item 12 is the second add-on, this is an authorization to hire an accounting clerk. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. Again, the Macomb Township Board of Trustees authorized HR to initiate the recruitment process for the position of accounting clerk. The position was posted in compliance with the MAPCBA and we received over 20 applications for this position. Seven candidates were invited to interview. The selection committee consisted of Stacy Smith, Amy Gutierrez, and myself, and we are recommending Sarah Tag for the position. Again, if it's approved, this position will start around July 11, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion? We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by, I'm sorry, a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, authorize the hiring of Sarah Tag for accounting clerk. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Moving on to item 13, we have a request to approve a conditional rezoning. This is from agricultural and residential, one-family urban, R1, to commercial, general, C2, and residential, one-family urban, R1. This would be for permanent parcel numbers 0820-300001 and parcel number 0820-300015. And this is located at the northeast corner of 22 and Garfield. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Report.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board. As you mentioned, this property is located at 22 Mile and Garfield. This is a long, narrow property, very difficult to develop, especially given that part of it is going to be taken by the Garfield Road right away when Garfield is extended. In order to make that happen, they approached us to do a conditional rezoning, which allows a few things, like a couple lots that are not quite as long as we would normally require. They are also seeking some commercial development on the front, a part of that that would front on 22 Mile. This would essentially mirror the development that was previously approved on the west side of future Garfield Road. We have worked with the landowner for a number of months, as well as his professional team, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval last night by unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Are there any questions or discussion on this rezoning? Hearing none, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the conditional rezoning from AG and R1 to C2 and R1 on the permanent parcels 0820-30001 and parcel 0820-300015. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 14 is the deleted item. Item 15, request to receive and file, no, we'll do that first. We're going to do the treasurer's report and then we'll do the motion. Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is required every so many months, treasurer's quarterly report, which simply provides detail about where our deposits are being held, how much money is being held in each account, and the value of those accounts. I passed out a copy to every member of the board, they can take a look at that. There may be some concerns about the direction of the markets recently that some people may be aware that they haven't been going great. The good news is almost, 80% of our funds are held in non-spectacular, non-fun, boring CDs and, you know, cash accounts and money market accounts, as we have to keep a lot of funds liquid. The investment we do have is very heavily regulated and controlled by state law and generally invested in bonds. It's about 20% of our overall portfolio. As a result of that, these bonds are typically layered for different maturity dates. Despite the volatility of market, we tend to not go up big when markets go up big and not go down big when markets go down big. So as of, you know, December 31 of '21, the value of that investment portfolio, not the cash and CD parts, was 25.6 million and we are now at 24.9 million. So it's down a little bit as a result of the markets, but nominally compared to most investment portfolios you'd see in more of a private sector situation. So that's the report.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Unless there's any questions on the treasurer's report, is there a motion to receive and file the treasurer's quarterly report?
Trustee makes a motion to receive and file the report.
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman, to the chair, to the treasurer. These bonds, it's similar to the portfolio that's held by the college. The value is the current market value, but that doesn't mean that that's the value of the bonds? Because we're going to hold them to maturity in all likelihood, correct?
So we can't lose money on the bonds. We're guaranteed return on those bonds. What we could lose is increased value in the bonds. So we're guaranteed a certain rate of return, we're guaranteed to get that at maturity, but during, while we wait for the maturity, the bond might go up in value or down in value depending on what other things are going on in the market. So on paper, even though we may have, just looking at the bond portfolio, for example, we may be down from 25.6 to 24.9, in reality, we can't lose money on the bonds. We can lose gain beyond what the, you know, purchase value of the bond is, but we really can't lose money.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Cusmano and a support by Trustee Nevers to receive and file the treasurer's quarterly report. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 16 is a request to purchase cardio equipment for the cardio center from Direct Fitness Solutions and Strengthio. Motion? Motion to approve?
Support.
Mr. DeCaro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board members. The Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to purchase cardio equipment for the Recreation Center. We put this item on mitten, we received two bids. At this time, we're recommending we purchase 11 items from Direct Fitness Solution, six pre-core treadmills and five pre-core bikes in the amount of $44,000, and three items from Strengthio, three stair climbers in the amount of $22,849. This is a total cost of $66,849. I've included the bids and the confirmation of process memo from the purchasing specialist. This is a budgeted item, there's only a portion of the equipment that we offer. I'll be back at a later date to purchase both Matrix and Octane equipment. And I also would like to add that the equipment that we're replacing, we will be getting $19,000 from a couple of different areas that we sold them to. I am available to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Any questions? Discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to authorize the purchase of the cardio equipment for the cardio center from Direct Fitness Solutions and Strengthio for a total amount of $66,849. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 17, we have a request to recondition the basketball courts at Waldenberg. This will be from Superior Sports Unlimited, Inc., in the amount of $32,125. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. DeCaro?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman. The Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to recondition the basketball court at Waldenberg Park. This would include a sports court flooring, painting of the game lines, and two sport court hoop systems with padding. We are recommending that the work be done by Superior Sports Unlimited for a total price of $32,125. This includes a 15-year warranty on the flooring and a lifetime warranty on the hoop system. Superior Sports Unlimited is a source well provider. I've included the quote and the confirmation of process from the purchasing specialist. This is a budgeted item and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. One thing I would add is this is a part of our $1 million commitment to the park rehabilitation and improvements. Any more questions or discussion?
How long will it take to complete?
Won't take long, to be truthful. We're hoping, well, it depends how quick they can get there, but we can get it done in less than a week, for sure, once they get started, yeah.
Good deal. You get good weather and you might catch that.
Well, like we've had the last few days.
Oh, yeah.
We can knock it out.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any discussion, questions? Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the reconditioning of the basketball courts at Waldenberg by Superior Sports Unlimited in the amount of $32,125. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Sal. Moving on to item 18 is a request to renew the grant writing agreement with Team Rowe for one year at $3,000 per month. Is there a motion? Motion to approve?
Support.
Ms. Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. I just want to thank you again for the opportunity to serve the township with my grant-writing ability. It has actually been, I would say, for a starter program, it has gone off to be a very successful year. We've learned a lot as a team, I think, within the township about just how much work it takes to actually apply for a grant. It's a lot of back and forth, it's a lot of teamwork, it's a lot of communication and collaboration with different people such as the county, SEMCOG, the State of Michigan, different foundations, and other leaders within the community, including Advance Macomb. As a result of all that sort of legwork, we've really positioned ourselves to be in a good spot for this year coming, coming from now until probably next July. So I'm really, I'm really excited for the future and I'd like to thank everybody, especially the folks in engineering and planning, Supervisor's Department, Treasurer's Department. They've all been, really done a yeoman's work in helping me do my job and I'd like to thank them for that. Just a couple of things, I just wanted to point out that what we've learned along the way is that there is a disparity within the state of Michigan where Macomb County is not receiving grant funding. We're talking about funding from the Department of Transportation, the Department of Natural Resources. Those are, for example, the TAP funding, the Transportation Alternative Program, we're applying for a grant. We actually should hear about that within probably in the next couple of weeks. As well as the Natural Resources Trust Fund, there's different pots of money throughout the state that we can take advantage of. And historically, Macomb County has not received their fair share of this. Commissioner, excuse me, Treasurer Gillette would probably, could probably go into this in much greater detail as he did all the legwork and research into this. But it's our hope that we can serve as an example for other municipalities within the county to assert ourselves and to make ourselves known and to bring those dollars back. Granted, this is not guaranteed revenue, so it does take a lot of work, but I think with the continued cooperation of the township, we'll be successful.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe. So far to date, what's, we have gotten a couple grants?
Yeah, we've, actually, two days after the last time I appeared at the Board of Trustees meeting, we received notification that we were awarded a $50,000 grant from the Wilson Design and Access Fund through the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan. That's actually going towards our pathway project here at the town center. And that actually, we can, we were able to leverage that as match funds for the Transportation Alternatives Program, the TAP grant. So right now, I don't have the numbers in front of me, I should have brought them with me, but we're up over about, we're at about $70,000 in terms of revenue collect, our grant funds collected this year with much higher to come.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd just like to make a comment about the Natural Resources Trust Fund in particular. I noticed in the newspaper, the last time a round of funding was awarded through the Natural Resources Trust Fund. This is money that the state collects from revenues from timber sale or leasing state lands for ore mining and so forth. There's a pot of money that's generated and that money is tens of millions of dollars that distribute around the state. And in reviewing those grants, not a single grant went to Macomb County, while some went to Oakland, some went to Wayne County and other nearby counties. So I pulled the details of the amount of grants through that fund awarded since 1980, every year. And Macomb County was 37th when you added the totals up in amounts of money granted into that fund out of 83 counties. So when I called the DNR, the administrator of that fund, I said, why is it that Oakland County, Wayne County, St. Clair County, every other county's been getting more money than Macomb? And he responded back that people just don't apply for Macomb for some reason or another. And when we started down that process with Liz, I could see a little bit of why. It's not an easy process to go through, but clearly other communities are doing it in these other counties. And so we do have to step up our game and I think we're going to be doing that.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette.
Just to follow up on that, Lynn, me and you had lengthy discussion on this. Is there anything you want to share about what you told me about some of the things that we got to get before we even get to grant?
Well, that's, that's not the Natural Resources Trust Fund one that we talked about. I'm talking the TAP grant, which is Transportation Alternative Program. There's a lot of, just trying to put a pathway, for example, from corners to the administration building. Basically, part of the sidewalk, first we had to have an archaeological team assert that there's not any Native American artifacts being disrupted. Then it was deemed to be prime farmland, agricultural land, so the US Department of Agriculture had to approve us putting the sidewalk down there. Then we had to have a bat mitigation plan to make sure we weren't disturbing the life cycle of certain bat species along the sidewalk. Then there was a rattlesnake, the ditch had conformed with Mississauga rattlesnake safeguarding protections so that the ditch from the sidewalk would not harm potential Mississauga rattlesnakes. And that's just part of the process for applying for the grant. It's big fun.
I guess where I was going with this, the both of you, when you talk to people in public, you know, me included, it seems like grants are so just easy, you fill out a form and you set an N and the money comes back, but it's hardly the case.
They're complicated, especially if you involve the federal government too. The state government alone is difficult enough. And it takes a team to pull it together because without like the Macomb County Department of Roads, fortunately, they have experience with Mississauga rattlesnake protection ditches. So they know how to help us shape that particular part of the application. So somebody's got to coordinate that into the, from multiple agencies into one application, write those narratives and it's a big learning curve and people have climbed. And people have climbed the hill. There are grants that do go out, and we've been climbing hills.
Well, I appreciate you sharing that with me and the board now, so thank you.
I'll, I'll add to that, that things like the CBDG grant funding that has federal requirements attached to it is, I can see why a lot of McComb County communities don't apply for these things, because I've been trying to be involved in some of them, and it makes me want to put my head through the table sometimes, because they're so frustratingly inane in their rules and regulations and hoops that you got to jump through. But, once you figure it out, and you know what to ask for, and how to ask for it, and how to apply for it, it gets easier. So I can see how Oakland County and Wayne County, once their communities have gotten into a program of applying and asking for certain monies, how they can continue to do it year after year. And that's what we're trying to get to, where we understand the process, and we just can kind of keep it in our pipeline. It has been a rough learning curve.
But you're learning.
But we're learning.
You're going forward.
Kicking and screaming, but we're learning.
You're going forward. That's what I, that's what I'm looking at. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions and comments. Now, it's my understanding that seventy thousand dollars collected, that's fresh grant money. That's not something that was in the hopper prior to us engaging Team Row. Is that correct, through the chair?
That is correct.
I'm going to offer an amendment. It's similar to the amendment that I asked for the first approval, that the supervisor approve a final written format for a report for all applications written and prospects, and a period to be presented before the board in six months. I make that motion.
You amend the motion on the floor?
I amend the motion on the floor to approve the contract with the caveat that the supervisor work with Team Row to approve a written format.
A status update.
A status update.
Accept that as a friendly amendment. Whoever seconded it would...
Nancy?
Yes.
Amended and seconded.
And again, it's my understanding that the McComb communities are not being discriminated against. It's just that they're not applying because of the rigorous nature of the application process.
That was, that was the statement that was given to me by the administrator of the grant program through the Natural Resources Trust Fund. That's what, he told me why McComb County has been thirty-seventh among eighty-three counties, despite our size and population.
Without delving into the politics of it, my assertion has been, and I've made this statement because I'm active in SEDCOG and I've talked to the SEMCOG leadership about it, I feel that communities like ours are at a disadvantage because we're financially responsible. Our residents are mildly successful themselves, and a lot of the grant funding that's available is slanted towards other communities that don't have the same position that we do. And a lot of this federal money is going in other directions and it's bypassing us. So we're trying to do what we can to stop being a complete donor community for all this other funding.
Chair, just to, you know, comment on that, I think that's correct. There's a perception that some communities are wealthy enough to steer directions of things and funds, and some communities are needful enough to be the recipients of those funds. And McComb County's job is just to pay for it all. That appears to be the perception that some people have, and it seems to be something that we have to overcome.
Mr. Chairman, your question, there's no reason to doubt the veracity of the person who made that representation, correct?
I have no reason to doubt the veracity. It could be, I want to step up the plate and make sure. I want to test it. I want to make sure we are applying for funds that our residents are paying taxes toward. You know, we want to get that return. I don't know how I can test, you know, what other communities are doing. But we want to step up what we're doing, make sure that we, that we're applying aggressively to get a return for our residents. But it's a challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in support of the motion as amended. Hopefully, we can break the cycle of victimhood and stop being a donor and being a beneficiary.
Benefactor, yep. Thank you, Trustee Crismano. Any more discussion?
Just had one question. I'm not opposed to this at all, and I do see that there was something gained from it this year. It seemed like early on, you know, we were kind of in the hole, or, you know, we weren't getting much. Are there any other payment terms that are possible, rather than a three-thousand-dollar-a-month retainer, such as maybe a smaller retainer, and then ten percent of whatever grants are awarded as payment?
We questioned Liz on the repayment, Charlie. I'll let you answer about the perception that happens with a percentage of acquisition-type arrangement.
I, and I'm backed up by an association, the National Association of Grant Writers, that retainers are more ethical. So for example, let's say that you had a smaller retainer, and then you said ten percent of whatever I brought in. So let's illustrate this TAP grant that's coming up. That will be approximately three-hundred thousand-plus dollars that's going to the township that should be dedicated to building the pathway, not paying me. So you're then going to give me a thirty-thousand-dollar bonus on top of what I'm already making. I don't feel that that is ethical. I feel that there, you can build in operational expenses into grant applications, but paying for me should not affect a project. And that is, that's just my, my personal philosophy. It's worked for me for all my other clients. I don't, I feel that a percentage-style compensation system doesn't, it doesn't, it's not helping the township. As a resident myself, I just would, I would prefer that money go exactly where it's supposed to go, to building pathways and fixing parks and providing resources for our community as opposed to paying a grant writer, especially something like a ten percent or whatever percentage it is. It's just taking it off the top. And I mean, I'm really happy to supply, there's a very lengthy document that goes through the sort of the intricacies and the ethical sort of questions that surround that particular topic. I'm really happy to share it with the board if they prefer. But it's just not, it's just not the way that I prefer to do business.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not saying so much, you know, that it's, I wasn't really questioning any ethical part of it. It's just, for instance, that grant that's thirty-six thousand or three-hundred-and-sixty thousand at ten percent would be the exact same amount we're paying anyway at three thousand a month. So there's no difference there. Although now, we only got seventy-two thousand dollars worth of grants, and we're still paying thirty-six thousand for it. So to me, it is somewhat of a what are we getting for it type thing. I felt a lot better now that you said we got at least seventy thousand dollars worth of grants than I did, I think it was six months ago, when there was zero. So not opposed to it. I'd like to try it again, but I mean, if there's not more than seventy thousand next year, we've paid seventy-two for seventy. In just a business decision for me, I'm used to a commission-based business in every business that I have. So that's the only reason I came up with that. But I'm in favor of the motion. Just wanted to see if there were any other alternatives, so.
My, my, my comment on your question is that our, the contract is written. We have an out clause at any time. And because we have a set fee with Liz, and her, his, her results are measurable in dollars. It's real easy. And if at any point, we feel like we're not getting a return on that investment, we can end it. You know, my personal opinion is, as long as we can continue to return some dollars while we're going for these larger TAP grants and the hundred thousand and the five-hundred-thousand-dollar grants, if we can get one of those while we're chipping away at all of these smaller grants, then we're ahead of the game, you know? In theory, you know, the seventy thousand dollars is, those are all in grants that township had never really applied for before, those particular ones. The Wilson Grant was the big one at fifty. You know, the TAP grant, I think we've applied for in the past, Jim? No? But we did with the DNR, with the others. So we, we, the, some state and federal grants the township has applied for, just not on a regular, consistent basis. Would that be a fair statement?
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay. So we're trying to get to this consistent grant writing, grant application. You know, it'd be nice if we were putting in one or two every month, just to see if we can land one.
Yeah.
Type of thing.
Chair, if I also may use an example, six months ago, in the review, we really hadn't got anything in yet. But that early period is spent sowing the seeds, and the harvest doesn't come till later. So it's like asking a farmer, where's your money after you planted the field? Well, you got to wait for the crop to mature. So we're getting the early returns, a very early returns with the seventy thousand. But as Liz noted, I have a very high degree of confidence that that, that the grant that we've been working on a very long time will come through, and that should be in August, I believe it is.
Actually, I'm hoping that we'll find out sooner than that.
Okay. So I think there are seeds that are now planted that have been watered, fertilized over the last few months, that we're going to start to see the produce from. That doesn't mean we don't keep working that field, because, you know, there's always the next harvest to worry about. But I would have been surprised if in the first three months or six months, you know, we had received any meaningful grants, knowing the process. We haven't even gotten the archaeologists to dig for the Native American, you know, artifacts in that period of time.
Rattlesnake nests and that.
So Leanne, are you going into farming?
Charlie's just trying to put insurance you'd understand.
Doing a good job.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions or discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to renew the grant writing agreement with Team Row for one year at three thousand dollars per month. Members, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, that's with the caveat, which was friendly.
My apologies, with the amendment that there will be a six-month status update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Liz. Motion, or item nineteen, we have a request to approve a Building Authority Commission reappointment. This would be for Roger Cardamom, and the new term would expire June thirtieth, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. You almost didn't have any support there, Roger. Any discussion? Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to reappoint Roger Cardamom to the Building Authority Commission for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, 2025. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty, this is a request to approve a Building Authority Commission replacement appointment. This would be for Crystal Kozak, appointment to, that she'll be filling in, ends in June thirtieth, 2023. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that this board or authority just basically approves expenditures for buildings in the township. Is that accurate? Because it's required by statute?
Mr. Cardamom, do you want to explain exactly what the Building Authority does since you've been on it?
Sure. When I first started here, I, before the bylaws were amended, I was informed that I'd be a member of the Building Authority, and I'm like, okay, what's a Building Authority? But yeah, for the, there are obviously, Stacy Smith and Tim can offer much more detail than I. But for the bonded projects, for mainly the rec center and the new public safety building, bonds were issued for those buildings. So we do the bond issuance and also the payment of the expenditures for those bonded projects.
And my understanding is, from reviewing the minutes of those meetings, they're very short meetings, correct?
They're very short meetings, yes. We're typically meeting right now simply to pay bills, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Crismano.
Chair, question, the payments for those, the payments made go through the Finance Department and through the Treasury Department as any other payment, correct?
Correct, yes.
We'll get the Stacy version of correct.
Thank you, Stacy.
So as Mr. Cardamom said, the Building Authority sells the bonds, we hold the money, and then any payments, so like the public safety building is our current one, will meet to approve payment out of the checking account that the bond money is sitting in, to make those payments. And then every six months, the Township Board, or the Treasury Department, then moves money into the accounts to pay for the bonds. So they lease the building from the Building Authority and make the bond payments that way.
So do the payments from the Building Authority, the decisions to pay bills in relation to...
That's done by the Building Authority Commission.
Right. And so the Township Board, that doesn't end up on our...
It does not.
They do not go on the bill run.
And then, so at any, no point does it actually go through Treasury or even Finance, then?
It goes through, well, it goes through Finance through me. So I'm the treasurer of the Building Authority. So I write all the checks. I have the chairman or the secretary as a second signer. And once the commission approves the bill run at the monthly meetings, then those checks go out. So the Treasury Department here does not move the funds. I move the funds. And they're, they are a separate, they have a separate tax number. We're sort of a separate entity of the township, even though we're not.
I guess I would, it would make sense to me that, like every other expenditure, that, you know, we go through the Finance and go through the Treasury at some point. So it would seem to me there should be some member of the Building Authority that's from the Treasury Department. And we've got someone from the clerk's office, we've got two from the clerk's office, essentially. We've got you from Finance, thankfully. I know these appointments are up tonight, and I have no objection to the individuals being appointed. I think they would do outstanding work. But it seems a little unusual that there's, that at no point does the money go through the Treasury Department, you know, the public funds dealing with the issue of these bonds.
Well, I mean, I think at the issuance of, so for the public safety building, for example, the contract for it to build the public safety building all went through board approval, and once that contract was approved in its final form, it effectively gets handed over to the Building Authority to then pay the bills as they come due, but only per the contract.
Correct.
That's been already approved, so they can't pay anything that wasn't assigned to them.
They're writing checks, essentially, to pay for items that need to be done, clearly, to finish a building. It would still seem to me that there should be somebody on that authority, doesn't have to be me, but somebody on the authority from Treasury, because, you know, ultimately, it's still public funds. It should go through, everything should be going through.
That would be up to the board to appoint somebody from Treasury if they'd like.
Are you volunteering, Carl?
And it cannot be an elected official, by the way.
Right.
Cannot be a member of the legislative body.
Yeah, I would like to amend the motion to appoint Carl DeAndrea from the Treasury Department. No objection to the other individual appointed, but I think we should have somebody from the Treasury Department.
Is that appropriate, Tim? As far as you know?
I don't have the bylaws in front of me. That's the problem.
I believe the deputy treasurer could be appointed, I think, as the deputy clerk is on it. And I believe the bylaws just say no elected official of the board.
It's definitely no elected official of the legislative body. I do know that.
And I know we removed specific...
Titles.
Titles, basically, you know, department head titles out of the bylaws so that it was a broader range of potential members to serve on it.
There'd be no reason you couldn't do it, then, as far as I'm concerned.
He's not here to ask, but does he want to serve on it?
Well, Carl brought to my attention that he believes, the individual I'm referring to, my deputy, that in almost every community that he's ever been aware of, a member of the Building Authority has been also represented by Treasury, because essentially, checks are being written and money is being administered. And all other funds, at some point, are go through both Finance and Treasury, you know, represented from Finance and Treasury.
Well, I'm, I'm sure that Ms. Kozak would have no problem stepping aside for Carl.
Mr. Chairman, it's one less meeting for her to have to attend for fun to read.
And this is not specific to any individual being, all of who are great people.
She doesn't like you, anyway.
All right, fine. Get her off. Let's put Carl on. Let's put Carl on.
All right. So is there somebody amending the motion?
My motion is to amend it to put Deputy Treasurer Carl DeAndrea on the Building Authority.
Trustee Nevers, are you seconding the amendment?
Yes, I second.
Any motion, or any motion, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, that's my understanding as well, that from Darren York versus the Harrison Township Firefighters Pension Fund, that Treasurer, Treasurer Department is supposed to...
Oversee.
oversee and have input into this function. So I'm in agreement with the amendment, conditional on his acceptance, of course. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cruzmano. I guess if he doesn't want it, he can always resign again, so. Okay, then no more discussion. It was a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to appoint Carl DeAndrea to the Building Authority for the remainder of the term set to expire June 30th, 2023. Motion passes unanimously. Tell Crystal she dodged a bullet. Sorry, Crystal. Item 21 is a request to adopt the resolution and authorize the supervisor to execute the SMART Municipal Credit and Community Contract for fiscal year 2023. So moved, Mr. Chair?
Support.
Do our representatives from Richmond Lennox or SMART wish to make a statement before we take this up?
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you just for a few moments tonight. You have the resolution and contract with SMART in front of you, so I won't, I won't bore you with the details that are enclosed therein. This is a result of a meeting we had, I think, last week with Mr. Viviano and Mr. Gillette in the supervisor's office in determining these funds. My name is Jeff White. For those that I have not met, I work for Richmond Lennox EMS Ambulance Authority, which is a government-owned authority owned by both the townships of Richmond and Lennox. We have, were in the ambulance business, I guess if you will, since 1975, and in 1999 we became community partners with SMART, providing a small shuttle bus service that initially was focused primarily on getting people to necessary medical treatment and other appointments that didn't need an ambulance, but might need to get to other types of treatment. Since then, a number of communities have reached out to us, either directly through our, through elected official to elected official, or through SMART to ask us to expand that service into their community, and that's how we ended up here in Macomb Township some years ago. Thought I would just give you an update on where, since this is a fairly significant amount of money, where those funds get used by Richmond Lennox EMS and your community that we receive. The height of COVID restrictions in 2020, we were only transporting about 2,300 residents here in Macomb Township. Ridership was down all over due to the various COVID restrictions and the needs to ensure some physical distancing, especially on the buses themselves. In 2021, as some of those restrictions lifted, our numbers increased to about 3,200 people that were riding the service. And in the first quarter of 2022, those numbers have kind of exploded now that the most serious parts of the pandemic hopefully are behind us, and we transported 1,859 people just in the first three months here in Macomb Township alone. We estimate this year we'll transport about 6,000 people in Macomb Township. That's about where we were at pre-pandemic here when we were providing your service. Mr. Gillette asked a great question that made me go back and do some research and think during our meeting. Recently, he asked me to break down, you know, where these people ride from Macomb Township. And every community is a little, a little bit different demographically, so I'll just share with you, we looked at about our last 12-month period and found out that, and there's a little bit of this that surprised me, honestly, we found out that 50% of your riders are using it for work and vocation, 29% are using it for medical, 4% are going to grocery or retail, about 5% use our shuttle that goes out to the metro airport, and then about 12% were other recreational type of trips that people might take using the vehicle. So they fell into that others category. I think that demographic is a little different in some other communities where the community population is a little older, and we see a little higher number of medical type of runs or rides in those, in those, in those older communities throughout the county. Like everybody else, we're struggling this year, or managing the challenging fuel cost. In 2020, when we were operating, during the pandemic, we burned about 16,000 gallons of fuel, and that cost to us was about $33,000. We were paying about $2.10 a gallon, buying the fuel in bulk once a year. In 2022, we're still buying our diesel fuel in bulk for those vehicles, we're paying about $3.99 a gallon, still a lot less than what people see at the pump, because we do buy the fuel in bulk purchase early in the year, and we got a little bit ahead of some of the current increases. But with that, plus the increase that we're seeing in ridership, we estimate our total fuel cost will be about $102,000 this year alone, so we'll see about a $70,000 jump in our fuel-related cost. One thing worth mentioning, through our partnership with SMART, we receive the money that your community provides us. We're also able to leverage a portion of that against some federal grant money, talking about the expenditure of grant dollars, where we actually get to do through a, through a cost matching for services we provide, we receive about $93,500 from what's called the Federal Transit Authority. So in order to provide your service here in Macomb Township, it's not just the money that we receive from SMART, but it's that plus the federal match that allows us to provide the service at the level that we do. We've got a couple of service expansions in progress. One of them is to provide same-day service. Right now, you have to call about two or three days in advance in order to get a vehicle, just because we are that busy. The buses are full, our small shuttles are full every day. And so, it takes about two or three days to get a ride. We do find there are people that really do need a same-day service for whatever reason. Somebody's car breaks down in the morning and they still need to get to work. Somebody needs to get to a doctor's appointment now because they woke up this morning sick versus being able to make their appointment two or three days in advance and so on. We had requested a vehicle through SMART that they were able to secure for us. In fact, that vehicle was just received by our organization, and we had it out here at the Tons of Trucks event this past Saturday, in fact. So we're looking to get that on the road and get that service up and operating for your community. We also have a large bus on order, a bus the size of a school bus, that we'll be able to use for local community and recreational trips for the communities that we serve. Our problem with that vehicle is the same problem we're having with getting ambulances, fire trucks, and even personal cars ordered, you know, right now, coming out of the COVID pandemic, we have, still have supply chain issues, and that vehicle has been on order for months, and just, we've not been able to receive it as yet. So from no, I guess fault of our own, we don't have that vehicle in operation yet, but the moment we can get it, it will be here and available to your community for additional services. Our, you know, the, I paint a pretty rosy picture of what's going on, I always like to give both sides of the story. The tough, the tough thing that we're going through organizationally is the same thing that every service industry is going through right now, and that is finding people and getting capital equipment. And so, we're not different than anyone else, I don't think, in that regard. So probably not telling you anything you don't know, but if things aren't moving quite as fast as we might have hoped, as fast as I might have personally hoped, it really has to do with those two specific issues. I have with me tonight Bonnie McInerney Slater, she is basically the Macomb County Community Ombudsman for SMART, that's always a mouthful to say, but she took the place of Fred Barbrat. Many of you over the years had met Fred, he had been here with me, he had been around SMART longer than I have, and would always be here to represent SMART and our partnership with them. So I'm gonna see if Bonnie has anything she'd like to say to the board.
I think actually you covered it all pretty well. The only thing that you didn't include is that we are looking to expand a new flex service, which is SMART's answer to the Uber. The price range is between $2 and $8. They're marketing it in certain communities kind of as a trial run, with the hope that it will expand hopefully by the end of the year through all of Macomb County. And that will be a same-day on-demand service that will work through Jeff for this area to provide.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Just a question, maybe a comment. First, thank you, Jeff, for getting the breakdown of who's riding the system, you know, 50% for work-related, surprised me a little bit too. So I appreciate you getting the answer. Were you able to find anything out about how many unique individuals? You said there's about 6,000 riders, or rides given per year in a non-pandemic year. Is it that 6,000 rides to 100 people riding it over and over, or is that everybody riding it once, or do we have any idea?
I don't. And the truth is, we do not, at this point in time, have a really great system for breaking down some of that data. There are a number of systems that do bus dispatching on it, but that is something that we don't have yet. So it was, it's a labor-intensive process. I actually have it being worked on, but I did not have a number before tonight's meeting. I think we just met mid or late last week, as I recall, and I just couldn't get that by this evening for you. But as soon as I have it, you will have it as well.
Gotcha. And just, you know, for clarification, in case anyone's watching the meeting and so forth, these are funds that we generally, we get granted to us through our gas tax dollars, vehicle registration fees, that sort of thing, that's credited to our community that we then use for transportation allocations. These are not so-called SMART taxes that we're using here, these are funds that we're getting through those other sources that we're contracting for individual service, for the shuttle bus service essentially.
I may turn that over to Bonnie just a little bit. My understanding is there's what's called municipal credits and community credits.
Right.
From my standpoint, and the service that I provide you operationally, they spend it the same way. But one of those is, is you're right, it's statutorily provided by the state through the gas tax dollars, but I think the other one is, actually does come out of that millage. And I just confuse the two, as to which comes out of the millage and which comes out of the statutory requirement. So Bonnie, are you certain on that?
I believe, and I'm not 100% sure, but the community municipal credits, I believe, are what comes from the millage, because that is the number that changed when we've got the new population numbers.
Okay. So that makes sense. All right, any, that's the only questions I have.
I'll make one other comment, just for the sake of the residents who are listening. These are, these credits that we're talking about, these are funds that are allocated to the township through SMART that can only be used for transportation-related services. The township does not have a transportation service of its own. In order to use those credits without contracting with an organization like Richmond Lennox, we would have to basically establish our own fleet, hire our own drivers, come up with routes, or come up with other, some way of spending that, those funds, that would fulfill their intended purpose. So it is much more effective and efficient for us to work with a company that already has that infrastructure in place.
If I may make one more comment, Mr. Supervisor. I would say I would...
I'll consider it.
Thank you. I would like to express the appreciation I have for Richmond Lennox for reaching out to us and asking questions on where we can, where you can do more, and how you can find new ways to serve the community. I think that you've done a good job in trying to look for ways to be as relevant and helpful as possible, and so I just want to acknowledge that and recognize it and say we appreciate it.
Mr. Lucido?
One question. There's a lot of talk right now on a federal level about suspending the gas tax. If that were to happen, does that affect us at all, and do we have to foot any of this bill that we're signing up for if we don't get the same amount of credits that we thought we did?
I believe that's a federal gas tax, so the state gas tax that divvies up the SMART money.
Okay. Because I think they were talking about on the state level too, so...
I think they divvy up whatever they collect, so if they choose not to collect, they just won't divvy up as much in the following year.
It'd be, if they suspend the state one, yeah, it would affect things.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Got one quick question to Mr. White. Logistically, how do you get people to work on time? You got one bus, I mean, that must be quite a challenge.
How do we get people to work on time?
To work on time, yeah.
We actually operate, we actually operate nine of 11 buses every day.
Okay.
You know, and, and we work with riders. The beauty of kind of our system, and when we, when Fred and I worked together with the folks at SMART to put all this together, the idea is we have buses that are traveling through corridors, and usually you can make a few pickups to get somebody to one place on time. So I've got a couple of wonderful young ladies in my scheduling department who really, you know, look at each individual ride and figure out how they can pick up riders, if you will, in a row, to, you know, if you think about it going north to south, to get as many people as possible. Some people understand that they might have to get on that little shuttle bus a little bit earlier than they would if they had their own car to get to work, but sometimes these are people with medical problems, seizure disorders, blindness, other disabilities that might not let them drive, and they don't, they understand that, that part of the ability to use this service that they don't pay anything out of pocket for at the time is, you know, is, might be having to be on the bus just a little longer. We find the same thing with our airport service. We used to just kind of be, you know, kind of focusing on maybe one family, if you will, oftentimes at a time. And what we're finding is that service has grown in popularity, is we'll have people that'll say, I don't mind getting to the airport two hours early if I don't have to leave my car 10 days in parking down there. You pick me up at my house, you put my luggage in, you pick up another family, you take us all down to the airport, we all get in, we don't have a parking fee, I'll have lunch while I'm at the airport and get on my flight, you know, and so we find that people were more receptive to that than we thought they would be, because we thought people would want to get on and get there and what have you. And as it becomes more popular, and we say to somebody, well, we can get you there, but it's gonna be two hours early for your flight, they say that's, we're just fine with that. So we find the same thing with employment.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cruzmano?
Mr. Chairman, I have just a question. Is there a link on the township website to establish fares for people that may be interested in not incurring the high costs of fuel and car insurance?
That is an excellent question that I'll have to look into. If there's not, there probably should be.
If you need those links, I can provide them to you to put on, to your website.
I'll look into that.
So as a follow-up question to the experts, how would a person who's interested in maybe making a switch and using your, your transportation service do so? Would they...
For the service that, that is operated by Richmond Lennox EMS through our partnership with SMART and your community, all they would do is, is call, and I'll just make the number public on the record, it's 586-749-7713. They will reach our dispatch office, they will discuss with them the availability of, the person would discuss with, with our dispatch staff their needs, and we would present them with the availabilities that were there for their ride.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I suppose that phone number will be posted on the website as well.
Yeah, we'll work on getting a landing page for that.
Great, sounds good. Thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you both for your time, and at this moment, if there's no more discussion, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to adopt the resolution and authorize the supervisor to execute the SMART Municipal Credit and Community Contract, Credit and Community Contract for fiscal year 2023. Mr. Cardamom, will you please call the roll? Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cruzmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano? Yes. That resolution is adopted. All right, thank you both. Moving on to public comment, this would be for non-agenda items. Anyone who wishes to speak may approach the microphone on the right-hand side of the room, I don't see anybody. Anybody wish to comment who is participating remotely can digitally raise your hand. Nobody? Okay. No public comments, so we're gonna move on to trustee comments. Trustee Lucido?
Just briefly, want to congratulate the two appointees and the three new hires, and also Team Rowe. Look forward to some grants in the next year and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes. I would just like to, well, thank the new hires, or congratulate the new hires, and also Ms. Rowe, probably eight, 10 years ago... And also, Ms. Rowe, probably eight, 10 years ago, I took a class in, through the township on grant writing. Oh my God. It was so tedious. So congratulations that you have chosen this profession and gone down all the rabbit holes that you need to go down to be successful. So it's real, I don't think anybody knows how difficult that is.
Nobody knows my struggle.
So congratulations.
Nobody knows.
Trustee Oliver?
Same thing. Just glad we got two new utility workers. Glad we're full in that department. And congratulations to Sarah in the clerk's department. She's a new hire. Getting the new appointees. And thank SMART people for being smart and moving a lot of our township residents around. It's, it's a lot. And Ms. Rowe also, congratulations. It, again, like I said, it sounded easy. That's why I had Leon explain some of that, because he explained it to me. And, and I was quite taken by some of the things that you got to go through. So keep up the good work. And that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver. Trustee Kuzma?
No comments tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Kuzma. Treasurer Gillette?
Just an apology to Crystal Kozak for bumping her off the building authority. Other than, no comments.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. I actually want to congratulate Crystal Kozak for somehow avoiding extra work without even being here. Two other minor points of business. We do still have an opening on the Clinton Macomb Public Library Board as one of our, but we, never mind, I'll, I'll talk about it later. One of our residents who has been serving recently stepped down from the board because he's relocating. So anybody who wishes to serve on the library board, who is interested in serving their community and helping us with that responsibility, it's a great way to get involved. And it's, it's a good way to look at some higher, your tax dollars are being spent and be involved in that. So please contact the supervisor's office. There is an application on the website, or they, they can call my office. The information's on the website. And lastly, please remember that July 4th, Monday, July 4th, the Township Hall will be closed for the holiday. And hopefully, everyone has a safe and happy 4th of July. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Support.
Discussion?
That's my line.
Oh, sorry.
Discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to adjourn tonight's meeting. Members, please vote. Motion is approved unanimously. Motion is adjourned.